Okay. There's a bill coming up. Some color coordination.
I know.
For that last. So you're.
No. No. Oh, it's this, no, it's this waving.
Good evening. This is the City Council Study Session with Community Services, Special Focus Area for today, February twelfth at five thirty. The public participation for this meeting, the Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting, scheduled for Monday, February twelfth at five thirty, will be held in person and virtually. To view the meeting virtually, please click the link on the agenda. And to listen to the meeting by phone or Zoom, please call the phone number two five three two oh five oh four six eight, or toll-free, eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven. And there is a Zoom link provided as well on the agenda. So we're ready for roll call.
Deputy Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Amir.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Thank you. Next, are there any agenda modifications?
Yes, Chair, Resolution five seven five three has been removed from tonight's agenda. It'll be added to a future agenda.
Thank you very much. So under Agenda Item Four, we have a presentation on Department Overview of Anti-Homelessness by Ken Hay. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Good to see all the council members here. So I will be going over the Department of Anti-Homelessness. So I am the Director of Anti-Homelessness. This department was created last year. I can't remember exactly what month it was. But, so I want to go into the philosophy for real quick because I think that's the most important part of this department and something that when I first started here almost four years ago, that I really believe in and that the work comes from these three words, and so compassion, accountability, and community. And so compassion, I think we all have compassion in the things that we do here for the City of Auburn. So in the City of Auburn, we do, you know, have our own Resource Center, I mean, our own shelter, night shelter, day shelter that the city pays for, Resource Center. We partner with a bunch of different agencies, a food bank, and we do the work. So in our department, we go out to the encampments. We provide all the services, the housing, transportation, anything that you think of. There's nothing that we don't do in this department. So really, the goal is, you know, we give ninety-nine percent, and we really ask for one percent from the folks because you have to participate in some way. The accountability part is, we do have a camping ordinance for the City of Auburn. In a camping ordinance, we do go out, we do offer assistance first, resources, shelter, to make sure people can come inside. And, you know, if someone doesn't want to participate in coming inside into the shelter, we do drop the camping ordinance, it's a forty-eight hour camping ordinance. And we give people forty-eight hours to think about what they want to do. And then at that forty-eight hours, if they're still in that same location, they can't be trespassed. And if they're still residing in that location, they can't be arrested and charged with criminal trespass. So we try not to go there. The goal is really to offer us the services and shelters as possible in the City of Auburn. And then the community part is super important. Trying to make sure that community members understand what we're trying to achieve here in the City of Auburn is to make sure that everybody is welcome, you know, we want everybody to be a productive part of this community. We want everybody to strive here, and we all have to work together to make that happen. So again, I'm Ken Hay, the Director. I have two new outreach workers for this department. Drew Conley is some, he's right here. Drew started about eight months ago, so he's been eight months in this position. And Patty Yates Starne, she's not with us tonight. She had a tooth-pull emergency situation, so she couldn't be here. But she just started, so she's been here, I think, close to a month. And so they do, I still go out as much as possible, but Drew and Patty are still boots on the ground, they go to all the encampments. There's no place in the City of Auburn that we don't touch. In the backwoods, in the, by the river, everything you can think of, looking for folks, making sure that folks are seen and that we don't forget people, even if it's on other people's property. So we go to King County property, PSC property. So all that stuff resides in the City of Auburn, so we do offer help in those locations. They have no jurisdiction there, but we do offer as much assistance as possible.
Ken, would you want questions during your presentation?
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Right, did you want to?
No, no, that's what I wanted.
Please ask questions.
You want the questions now?
You can ask them now if you'd like.
When you hired these two wonderful people to go out there with you, what kind of experience did they have? What made you pick them, hire them?
So Drew came from some federal work, but then he did some outreach out in LA in a nonprofit working in this field role. And so the reason why I chose Drew is not, he didn't have a lot of experience, but Drew brings a demeanor to this job. He's very thorough in what he does. I mean, this guy is amazing. Honestly, he's, he's, he's gonna be me someday. But no, he, Drew's very good at what he does. He's very confident in what he does, he learns quickly. And, you know, he's able to take care of himself out here and he gets along with the folks, and they trust him enough to want to do the work with him. And Patty came from the Salvation Army Street Help Team. And so I worked with her for almost four years before she came into this role. And she has a whole bunch of connections. She helped house a lot of people with us, with her, with the funding that Salvation Army had, with the moving costs and things like that. So she already knows a lot of the folks that are on the street out here in Auburn. And, and, and again, we work together. So Drew, her, make a great team. It's great to have, you know, a male and a female on the team because there are some transportations that, you know, it's great to have Patty to be able to do some of that work as well.
Okay, I met Patty when I was out there with you, and I remember how passionate she was and caring towards those women that she was, you know, taking care of, talking to them, so thank you for answering my question.
Any other questions? So again, I was just talking about the work. We provide direct proactive services and outreach. So I know you hear a lot of people talk about the outreach that they do. We don't give blank, it's intense. We don't go out there to do the things, right? We want to make sure that we're helping people get off the streets and not making people familiar with their situation. So in our Resource Center, like, you know, the providers that we have on there, we offer ID assistance. I mean, everything is tangible. So when you, when you meet us, or we're out there at the, in the encampments and doing the things, we have a computer, we have a MiFi hotspot. We do the work at the encampments, at the RVs, so we can get people's IDs while we're out there. We can start, because homelessness touches every department in the City of Auburn. So whether it's public works or parks, police, we respond to the bike team and police officers in any situation. So also, we don't work with just folks who are homeless, we work with folks who are experiencing or on the verge of homelessness, parents who are calling about adult kids if they're having troubles with mental health issues, things like that. So we do respond to, we try to help with all those situations. Community concerns, so we do see, click, fix. We, you know, we have people who are sending in things about people parking on side streets or encampments that are popping up in the, in the locations where they're not supposed to be. And so we respond to those, and it's great to have community members to be able to notify us because we're not everywhere all the time. So when those things do pop up, it allows us to go offer those people services and try to get them into shelter and then move from shelter to housing. And then we staff the Resource Center, so we do have a community court here, and I'll talk about that just a little bit on the next presentation. But we do staff the Resource Center, myself, Drew, and Patty. And so the majority of people do come in to see us because we're out in the environment all the time, so we're always telling people to come see us on Thursdays from one thirty to three thirty at the Resource Center. And so we do a lot of housing through the Resource Center, a lot of partnerships, free phones, IDs, medical insurance, Orca cards, there's nothing that we don't do in the Resource Center, so we staff that on Thursdays. And then we participate in the regional effort. So again, we have a healthy housing hotel here that King County purchased that we are a part of, and we work close with that staff as well. We are a part of HMIS, so the Housing Management Information System through CEA, Coordinate Entry. So we do use their daily list that they give us every day to be able to nominate people for housing. And we also participate in the sub-regional planning that happens through KCRHA, King County Regional Home Authority. Is there any questions there? Yes?
Yes, Councilmember Kate.
Thank you, Chair. Can you tell me a little bit more about what that process is for the daily list, and you said HMIS? What's the acronym there?
The Housing Management Information System through King County. And so what happens is every morning, we are part of the juvenile family and single adult daily list that comes out. So King County Regional Home Authority sends out an Excel spreadsheet. It has open units throughout King County. And so if you meet the criteria, if we have clients that meet the criteria, we can nominate them for housing. And then if they get picked, then there's a process, paperwork, and all the things that you gotta do, and then you have to, you know, transport them for lease signing and things like that. So it could take, it could take some months, it could take some weeks, just depending on what type of housing it is and, and what's available.
Yes, Councilmember Rakes.
Thank you. So Ken, one time when you and I were out, we ran into a problem where someone was trying to get treatment, and it was at night, and we couldn't find any treatment for them. Has that been resolved, or is there any places to take them at night?
No, not necessarily. It's still a process, it's still hard. The good thing is, the Recovery Navigators is a new program that's been around, and so they're super helpful. We've been working with them for a few months now, and so you can call them. And sometimes they'll be able to come out, they will come out, they'll come out. But they, they have ends to get people into inpatient treatment and, 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 but still, it's still a process. It still takes time. There's no place where you're like, just calling, or they're taking the detox right now, going to inpatient treatment. Detox is a little easier to get into, but finding an inpatient bed is still a problem. But I'd say you probably get into inpatient treatment probably within a week. Yeah, it's way better than what it was.
It's all right, she's already asked a question.
Ken, are we working, since we are two county city, are we working with Pierce County on some of these issues?
We do, I forgot to mention. So we are part of, so we do have a, another housing option we have is through ARPA funds, we put some money aside for Clean and Sober Housing Program. So if somebody's wanting to go into inpatient treatment, we'll pay up to three years of Clean and Sober Housing. So we have numerous people in that program. I had to put a pause on that just to make sure that we have enough funding to cover the people who are in there. But we also are part of the Opia Settlement Funds for King County, as well as Pierce County. So the Opia Settlement Funds is another program where it pays, because it's not a lot of money. So I had to shorten the time from, it's a three-month program, three to four months. So it's three months with the incentive of an extra month if you're going well in, in treatment or in your program. And then I have not used the Pierce County funding yet, but that also is an option for also Clean and Sober Housing. So, you know, it's, there was a gap that was missing, so you can, you can have all the inpatient beds you want to, but if there's nothing on that, the end of that, you're just releasing people back onto the street. So it made sense to use the housing that we have available in Auburn, so we partner with Aha Clean and Sober Housing, as well as Elijah's Hope. And those are where our housing options are. And so we partner with We Care, Walk Freedom, to house the folks that are in Auburn using their services.
Thank you for answering my question, because I just met a lady at a meeting, and she asked me if we partnership with them. And I told her I wasn't sure, but I would ask the question. So, thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you. Following up on the data point, is there, so with that list that you received, trying to figure out, are we contributing any content to that database as far as records entry for updating kind of case files or who's in the greater county systems? Or are we simply pulling that information down as far as housing availability?
So we're not pulling anything, we're part of HMIS, the system? And so, again, what happens is, they daily send what's available throughout King County. And then just based on that information, you go through to see if the person, most of them are disability, so you have to have a disability, you have to have chronic homelessness, so there's some guidelines that you have to meet in order to nominate people. But we don't, we're not uploading, like, we're not, we're not collecting data on that. That's all through the Housing Management Information System through HUD. And so that data is being collected through the Housing Management Information System. We don't collect that data. We track how many people were housing, and we have a spreadsheet that we track the people that we're working with, and some of that data collection, so gender, ethnicity, you know, chronic homelessness, and then how many people we've housed.
Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
And I was trying to get a sense of how we're managing that information, exactly to the point that you raised, which is, when we're looking at equity, let's say two hundred people are housed, what's that makeup, right? What does that look like? Is it all men, is it all women, is it old, is it young, is it disabled, is it veteran? Like, what sort of categorizations does it wind up?
It's everything. So all that's, again, is in this, the Excel spreadsheet that we keep. So, you know, again, it's, it's broken down into ethnicity, gender, race, veteran status, chronic homelessness.
The second half of that, who's gonna get to? It's okay, is, as we've had more folks come into the department, or have had turnover in the past with some of the staff that you've had, is trying to understand how that works with continuity for those folks who are in the field, right? So if we've got three different people who are potentially going out and having contacts, how do we know that the three aren't having the same contacts again and again and again? Like, how do you sort of manage that programmatically?
Yeah, and we want people to have the same contacts, because we don't carry caseloads. I don't want to carry caseloads. So our goal is, because we don't want to chase people around, there's people who we come in contact with who aren't just ready right now, right? So it doesn't, we're not a nonprofit where we have to see people weekly to get numbers, to get funding. Our goal is to help as many people as possible, so that's why we're able to help hundreds of people. So Drew might be working with somebody, but I can come alongside if Drew is working with them, and they know who I am, I could pick up where Drew is left off, and we can work together. So we, so, but when we put our information into Excel, we can see if it was duplicated. But we all work with the same people, because again, it's, I might get to a point where the person I'm working with, maybe I can't go any further, and they want to work with Drew, and that's fine, and then I move on to somebody else, or we switch. There's some problematic people sometimes that we have to, to work on together. And so we don't carry caseloads, we just house people and work with people and keep people housed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it was more from a procedural standpoint, I wasn't sure what type of overhead was necessary for that coordination, if we wind up having more people in the future, less people, if you would see the mechanics ever needing to change.
I don't think so. I think less is more. I don't see us having a huge department of outreach workers. I think when I was here by myself, we were doing a great job. I think adding Drew, we're doing a better job, and adding Patty, we're doing an amazing job. But less is more. I don't, I don't, I don't agree with huge staffs of outreach workers. I think we, we are capable of doing more with what we have. And so I don't really see the department adding a whole bunch of more outreach workers. I think with what we have in Auburn, the three outreach workers, our shelter, the providers that we put in place, I mean, last year, we housed about ninety-six people, just, just two staff, two outreach workers. I don't see a lot of outreach workers in, in nonprofit doing that.
Councilmember Cheryl Rakes, please.
Thank you. I just have a question. With all the data that you're keeping and stuff, are we seeing any kids that are being out of the foster, aging out of the foster system here in Auburn?
You know what's weird is, so we try to partner with our young adult shelter here, which is very difficult. I'll just say that, it's very hard to find a connection, to try to help there and work together, because we do see a lot of the young people in the parks sometimes, because their shelter lets people out at, you know, early in the morning, and so there's no, it's not twenty-four hours. The hard part is, young adults are, don't necessarily want to interact, so it's hard to, to help. And so I can't tell you, I mean, we've seen a couple of people come out of the foster system, but it's really hard to engage with them and, and keep working with them, because there's not a connection with the agency that's housing them, and it's hard to find them during the daytime, because most of them are all over the place.
Ken, are you, want to make sure you have enough time to conclude your presentation?
Yeah.
Do you have more to present?
I do. Yeah, so, and I go through these quickly, who do we serve? Again, those experiencing homelessness, those on the brink of homelessness, again, all city departments. So again, we work with young adults, seniors, veterans, couples, people with animals, RVs, anything you think of. So we don't, again, we don't focus on just one group of folks, there's, we serve everybody in the City of Auburn experiencing, or on the verge of experiencing homelessness. I put housed two hundred plus people since the four years, close to four years I've been here. We've, we've done, we've housed more than two hundred, probably more, you know, way more than that. Trying to be generous with the numbers, but we've cleaned up numerous encampments within the city. So when we first got here in, in twenty twenty, it was, it was a lot. There was a lot going on. There was a lot of encampments, a lot of people camping, a lot of garbage and things like that. And so I think what you can see now is we respond really fast, we get people in the shelter. The goal is to turn the shelter over so we can make more room for people outside coming inside and then house those people. So we try to go from structure to structure. We don't try to go from straight outside to housing. We find it more successful when people go inside, there's some structure, go inside, they seem to stay housed longer. So we've cleaned up a lot of the encampments, got people housed, got people in the shelter. We helped set up the community court that we have going on, the diversion court here. And so again, we run the Resource Center and help with those clients that are in community court. And we have more than twenty providers in our Resource Center, again, offering all the services from cell phones to IDs to Orca cards and everything that people need to get started. And then I just put some pictures on the slide just to show you kind of what it looked like. If I took you to these places now, it doesn't, it doesn't look the same. So if, on the slides up here, when I first got here, this is one of the biggest encampments I think we had on, on West Valley Highway. We spent a lot of money cleaning this up. It spanned the whole, it seemed like the whole woods out there. But a lot of these people either took the help or didn't take the help. We cleaned this area up. Majority of people know the resources out here in the shelter, some people just don't want to go. But like I said, if I took you to these areas now, we make sure that we, even when we don't get calls out here, we go to these places to make sure people aren't going back to these places, and if we find people, we're offering the same services, but also holding people accountable. And then some of these are on different properties. This was still West Valley Highway, and the damage you see that's done in the wetlands and in the rivers, and so that's why we keep going back out to these spots, so we don't get back to places like this, where there's a whole bunch of destruction and garbage. So that concludes the, the overview of the Anti-Homelessness Department. Is there any questions on that?
Do you have any questions in the council? Yes.
I was gonna say, right before the New Year, we had it on the books to go out to the Veterans Village in Orton, and then I got six, so forgive me for having to cancel on that. But I would love to see about getting that rescheduled, and now that we have some new council members, they may also be interested.
I agree.
So I would love to have a visit down there whenever we could make that happen.
Awesome, I will work on that.
Yes, Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. Ken, homelessness is a twenty-four-seven thing. I know there's three of you in the department, so it's not a nine-to-five job, it's, it's twenty-four-seven. Do you guys work in shifts, or do you partner together? Because at night, it's obviously quite dangerous.
So we don't go out at night. We're, so we stop at, I don't know, whatever time we stop at, it could be five or six or something like that, because we're a salary, but we're not out here at nighttime. I don't, yeah, again, I mean, it would be, we could, it's just different. And the problem at nighttime, though, is the services that you could offer are not available, because nobody's working twenty-four-seven.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
Are we looking to partner with organizations that can provide care after normal working hours?
And what kind of care are you talking about? Because one of the things that we do is, we do take nurses and doctors out with us during the daytime. We take the We Care Clinic out on Fridays, we take Nomad Pet Fostering, we take, so we take a bunch of providers out during the week to help out. At nighttime, I don't know what other services outside the Ray of Hope Shelter, people know they can go there. Most of the people out here are signed up to go into the Ray of Hope Shelter, so if there is some kind of emergency or some situation they need, daddy's always available. My phone stays on twenty-four-seven.
I would imagine.
Yeah. And so if there's emergencies, we do respond, but, I mean, that's something we can look into to see what that would look like at nighttime. I think the Union Gospel Mission is probably the, the agency that probably goes out more at nighttime, and that's just to, to connect with people and help out, you know, certain things like that. But we try to make sure, put things in place during the day, so hopefully, you know, people can come inside.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. Are there specific volunteer opportunity available for the community member who want to contribute?
Yeah, we're always looking for more people to help in community court, especially on the Resource Center side. Because we do have, we see around forty people, around forty people a week come into the Resource Center, which is a lot. I think the numbers that came out for last year were that, we, we have the highest number of people coming to the Resource Center, so I think it was close to fourteen hundred people for two thousand twenty-three. And so we do need help with signing people in and getting people to connect it to the resource providers that they come to see, so.
Where we can find the information, so we can share it.
So I think on the, on our website, I think on the, on their employer, we're looking for volunteers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Ken, you're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
From the time that you started, I remember going out there with you, it was horrific. Out of the two hundred plus, have you seen any of a revolve back?
Not really. I mean, there are some people who don't want to stay housed, but we, so, unlike, you know, working for the city, we don't stop working with people. There is no intake, there's no exit. If I haven't seen you in a year and you calling, you need help? Like, today I had a person who called, and, you know, they're finding their way almost to being homeless again, and so we're gonna take care of that, because the goal is to keep people housed, so. And then when people don't want to stay in their housing, we try to. So, um, and then when people don't want to stay in their housing, we try to work on keeping them there and seeing what the problem is. So we do a lot of work on not just housing people, but trying to keep people housed. So I don't see a lot of people returning to Auburn after they're housed. We, we definitely, um, make sure our phones are available for people to call, so we can figure out what the problem is and try to deal with it without them coming back here, if they're not living here.
Yes.
Uh, I think my last question on this one. Uh, do you have a rough sense of how many folks are experiencing homelessness in Auburn currently? I'm not sure when the last, uh, point counted was.
The last, um, count was, they're doing it different. King County Regional Home Authority did a pick count. It was wrapped up like last week, but they're doing it different. They're not going out and counting people. They're, they were giving out vouchers for people to come in and tell, tell their stories. So I don't know how they're counting. Um, I can't tell you how many people, it's hard, because people come and go and new people show up and then people leave. And so you never really get an accurate number of how many people, um, are still out here experiencing homelessness. I would tell you it's, it's less than when I got here four years ago.
Sure.
But I, I tell you, I mean, if I'd estimated, um, I don't know, hundred fifty, hundred, hundred fifty. Because there are, there, a, a lot of people are on other property that they know we don't have jurisdiction on.
Got it.
Um, and so that's the hard part, right, is we still go back there, but they know there's no consequences for, you know, anything that's going on on their property. So the option of not taking services is theirs.
Director, hey, I, I just would say, and I don't mean to repeat, but I went out there when, right after you, those pictures were taken. And it, anecdotally, it's a big difference from what I can see. And just so appreciate, uh, you helping those folks and helping to move them up and out of, uh, you know, desperate situations. Uh, but also I just want to say that, uh, uh, you know, it's great that you have help. Been worried about you a little bit, being out there by yourself.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Done some of that work in the past, but, uh, you're doing great work.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I guess we can't let you go yet, because you got another.
I got one more.
On the overview of the Auburn, um, Consolidated Resource Center.
Correct. Um, and so I won't take a lot of time, I'll go through this. So, um, I'm gonna talk about the Auburn Consolidated Resource Center. Um, and so our, uh, Consolidated Resource Center holds, um, we lease a space off of a, um, I'll say twenty-eight oh six Auburn Way North, so, um, it's a kind of strip mall, um, setting. So in that space, um, going south to north is you have the Auburn Food Bank, you have the Ray of Hope Day Shelter, and then you'll have the Ray, um, the Sundown Night Shelter. Um, and then you'll have the Resource Center, Community Court. And then there's a space, and then next to that, we partnered with, um, uh, We Care Daily Clinics. And they built a, a space out there that they leased from us, um, and that's the Neighborhood Center, which is awesome. And that's like a recovery cafe model. Um, and so it's a, it's a great place that we partner with. We go in there all the time and work with the same people. Um, let's see. So, uh, the Ray of Hope, or the, the Sundown Night Shelter, um, around thirty-five to forty-five, um, beds, um, available in that space. Uh, in the day center, they see about an average of sixty people entering and leaving the day center daily. So people don't stay there all the time. Some people might just get a cup of coffee or watch TV for a minute and leave. But we go there to help turn that place over. So it's amazing to go in there and see a whole bunch of new faces, not that I'm excited about that. But there's, we don't believe that people should be sitting there for a year, two years, five years. Um, so the goal is to get those people out, make room for new people to come in, so we can keep people from outside. There are sixteen spaces. There is a safe parking program as well at the Ray of Hope. Um, so there's sixteen spaces. We don't take RVs, um, or, or, um, they don't take RVs. Um, it's cars, vans, um, but no RVs. Um, and then again, the services that they offer, we provide a lot of services when we go in there. Again, to make sure that people are getting housed and not staying in the shelter longer than they, they need to. Um, I was telling you before on the other part, we saw, so, sorry, eighteen. So one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five people serviced in two thousand twenty-three in the, in the Resource Center. I said fourteen hundred, so four hundred more. Um, so we see a lot of people come to the Resource Center on Thursday. It's not all from Auburn, the word spread. And so you get people coming to, um, because, you know, people get housed and then they tell their friends and, or some, some stumbles into Auburn and hears about the Resource Center. And so, um, they come to get help. Uh, we do agency, we have agencies both in person and in virtual. So when I first started this during COVID, we had to do everything virtually. So we have iPads and the providers were on there, but we still provided an open space for people to come. And that's just continued. So we have more providers coming in in person, but we also do have, um, providers virtually as well. So that people who can't make it in can come in virtually and still meet with the providers. Um, and then again, we offer tangible and meaningful services in there. Um, so people leave with a plan once they come into the Resource Center. It's not just paperwork. Um, we partner with King County for our community court. Um, it's a diversion court. I won't talk a lot about community court, because that's not my, my space there. But, um, we do, uh, partner with them to provide the, um, some of the services, um, that people need. When they're entering the community court, they can come right to the Resource Center and get hooked up with those services. Um, the Neighborhood Center, like I was telling you before, it's, it's through the We Care Clinic. Those folks who are receiving services at the We, We Care Clinic can come into the, um, the Neighborhood Center and they provide, I mean, everything you can think of, haircuts, they got yoga, they have, um, dog medita- meditation. They have, I don't know, parties, food, I mean, anything. It's amazing place to go in there and people to get hooked up and be a part of a community where people are sober and working on their sobriety. Um, and they, again, provide services and resources. I was able to work with them to get them hooked up. Also with like Housing Connector, um, HMIS, so they do daily. They also start housing people as well, so we work together to house people. Um, and so we're all working together to, to make sure that we're servicing all the people. And just, so I put up on the screen, so you know, it's on Auburn Way North. Um, and so, uh, that's what that looks like. But right here, this is the food bank. This will be the food bank. This will be, this green area will be the day center. This red area is the night shelter. Um, in the middle here, oh, I'm sorry, right here, this part right here is the Resource Center. So day shelter, night shelter, Resource Center, Community Court here. Um, this will be an open space. And then here is the, um, is the Neighborhood Center. Um, and then on the far end, there is the, uh, the, um, laundromat. So we also do laundry. So they do laundry services. They have shower truck that comes out twice a week. Um, so we try to cover all the bases and make sure everybody's needs are met, um, when they come in there and that they're also receiving services, so they don't have to stay there longer than maybe to be. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Yes, councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you. Um, how long's our lease on the facility?
Um, I don't know.
They are five-year leases with five-year extensions, so we have, I believe, four five-year extensions available.
Right, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for.
Right, so next, uh, uh, councilmember Baldwin, would you do us a favor of, uh, giving a short ready report up?
Um, sure. So, trying to think of our last meeting that we had. Sorry, normally I put my thoughts together a little bit better before that. Uh, so with the Ready Coalition, we are continuing to meet twice a month, as we have been. Uh, in our recent session, we went over, uh, it's sort of a continuation of the decision-making process. So what's important about this is being able to have all of us trained and experienced in understanding when decisioning happens, what are the different mechanisms that we can do to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to have a voice within that? And to work with members of the Coalition to identify, are there certain mechanics that work better for us as a group or not? And to take that input, and that's been conveyed back to our consultants that we've been working with to help establish what that will look like programmatically going forward as we work to develop a work plan. So as there's, in the future, going to be potential for intake for the types of things that we might address, um, the different types of decision-making can be. Um, for example, you could go where everybody holds up their hand and you can go five or three, two, one with your range of how much you support or don't support a given topic. Um, another variation on that, which, these are also great for Zoom meetings, by the way. I've put some into place in, in my day job, where, where you're looking for consensus from folks who are participating in that space. You can do a thumbs up, you can do kind of a mid-range, or you can do down if, you know, you're against it. And those, of course, can open opportunity for other discussion and types of things. And so it's, you know, maybe feels unique that as adults, we're learning how to do decision-making. But I think in this space where we're trying to make sure that there's the opportunity for different voices to have, uh, wait in a space where there's sort of a natural hierarchy, right? Because we have our administration, we have directors, we have council, but we also have staff, right? And so how do we build up those practices to make sure that sort of no matter what title you have attached to your name, when you kind of give that signal or give that indicator, that you're gonna have, um, sort of equal measure of voice in that room? And so I think in those practices, we're going from, you know, shifting from learning and storming and forming into more practical measures that are gonna really be surfacing in the next few months as we start to develop a work plan, so.
Thank you, councilmember.
Does that help?
I mean, it was. And, and I want to thank you for, you know, pulling my weight when I was out of town at the last meeting. But, uh, it is, uh, appreciate, uh, the mayor's leadership, along with, you know, the directors, uh, that participate on our Ready Coalition. But, uh, we have some amazing, uh, employees here at the city that are really taking the time to, uh, dedicate themselves to moving forward on the ideals of the Ready Coalition. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, any questions on that report up? All right, so, uh, next item that we're looking at here is ordinance, uh, sixty-nine twenty-seven. Uh, Director Thomas, good to see you. How are you?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Council. Um, I think this is a, this is a pretty routine ordinance that I'm bringing to you tonight for consideration. Um, not, so no, no PowerPoint presentation. This is something that we bring to you annually, and it, um, ties back to, um, a local revitalization financing that we did beginning back in two thousand and nine. So back in two thousand and nine, the state provided an option to encourage local governments to invest in areas that needed revitalization. And so as long as you could demonstrate the area within your city that needed revitalization, they would allow a portion of the sales tax that the state collects on our sales tax. They'd allow us to levy some of that sales tax dollars back, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, to help pay for those revitalization investments. So in two thousand and nine, we applied for a revitalization program that included what we called the promenade improvement. So it was along South Division Street. It re, um, it included rebuilding the entire South Division, which included roads, sidewalks, street lighting, um, utility replacements, so water sewer storm drainage, as well as fiber and utility relocation. So the total, the total, we actually ended up issuing bonds to do that work, totaling about seven point two million dollars in, um, twenty-ten. And so every year since, we have asked to levy the maximum amount that we could possibly, um, against the state sales tax for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So this is our fifteenth year, um, levying that portion of the state sales tax. And we're just asking to continue that. We can do that for twenty-five years. So we have, we can do that for a total of twenty-five years. We have ten more years. And the idea is that it helps pay for, or, um, at least significantly offset the debt service costs associated with that, that bond issue, that seven point two million dollar bond issue. Uh, just one thing I like to always remind the councils, particularly for the new council members, that this isn't a new sales tax. It is, it is already part of the sales tax that the state collects. So of all the sales tax that we pay, the city gets a portion, the county gets a portion, and the state gets a portion. This is a portion that the state is already collecting. We're just asking them to send us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right. Any questions? All right, well, thank you for, for that. I think you also have the next item.
I do.
Yes, uh, ordinance number sixty-nine thirty.
Yes, I do. So this is, um, business and occupation tax. Again, I'm just making some revisions to our code. We, I know I was just here a couple of months ago. But, um, as we got to our year-end filing, um, there was a lot, additional questions, um, and brought to our attention that we needed some more additional clarifying points. Um, we have, there's three exhibits, um, that are, that are associated with this ordinance. Um, exhibit A starts on page thirty-one of your council packet, and exhibit B is page fifty-six, and exhibit C is page fifty-seven. The high level, exhibit A is amending the BNO ordinance itself. And we're really highlighting, um, revision, the, the areas that we're adding clarification to is the definition of a warehouse space, um, as well as in the actual square footage tax emphasizing on when square footage tax is applicable to businesses. So that's the changes that we're making to the BNO tax code, really just emphasizing what is the applicability of square footage tax to business? And what does warehouse space mean? And then exhibits B and C is the waiver, the waivers of interest and penalties. And when, uh, when the finance director has the ability to waive interest and penalties on the BNO tax and other taxes. So I don't know if you recall, um, a couple of months ago, when we were here, we added a new tax code section to pull all other business taxes into its own code section. And so we have really two code sections when it comes to tax waivers and tax penalties in the administrative provisions. One is for BNO tax specifically, one is for all other taxes. And so exhibits B and C are just aligning the two administrative code sections for BNO tax, and then one for all other taxes. And it's just cleanup, um, removing, um, removing the, um, provision to waive taxes when a business has, or waive interest and penalties. When a business hasn't been licensed but has still been filing taxes, they don't have the ability to actually file when they aren't licensed. So it's kind of, uh, a non-starter, um, as far as, um, a waiver possibility. So those were the, the three primary things that we are trying to accomplish with these revisions, with this ordinance.
Any questions?
Yeah.
All right, uh, does council have any questions? Yes.
You said waive tax for new business. They're waiting. You mean, they're in process? That, that the people will get waived or, I'm confused, or because I think there is some business, they have a space, or they filed tax and they never use it. Do they get waived or no?
Are you talking about square footage tax or?
You said the waive, or maybe I missed. Waiving tax for a business where, why are they working to get their license? So you waive their taxes?
Okay, so there's language right now, the language in the code currently says that the, the director has the ability to waive interest and penalties on unpaid taxes. So it's for when a business hasn't been paying their taxes and interest and penalties have accumulated. Um, at the director's discretion, uh, a business could ask to, under certain circumstances, ask to have those penalties and interests waived. The way the language currently states is that I can waive if a business hasn't been licensed. So having a business license is separate. If they have a business license, but they haven't been paying and filing their, their BNO tax. So that doesn't, you, you can't be not licensed. That's part of the, uh, the, the. Okay. BNO reporting is that you have to be licensed first.
Thank you.
Yep.
You answered what I was thinking. Thank you.
I did not explain that clearly.
No, no, actually you did, but my brain, but you cleared it to me. Thank you. Now I got it. They need to be licensed. Thank you.
So, yes, uh, councilmember Rags.
So when you talked about the square footage, is that gonna make anybody's BNO go up?
No, it's clarifying when a business would be, so we have the two taxes. We've got the gross receipts tax and we've got the square footage tax. A business would only pay the higher of the two. So some cities, they have a square footage tax and they have a gross receipts tax, and they pay both. We're just clarifying that it doesn't matter what kind of business you're engaged in. If you operate a warehouse space that either exceeds four thousand square feet, an indoor warehouse space, or two hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet outdoor. space, or 261,000 square feet outdoor, that we're clarifying that it doesn't matter what kind of business you operate, that you could still potentially be subject to, to square footage tax if you have a warehouse space that you're operating. So it's clarifying that, and then we also removed the language of items that are being stored temporarily, because then we had to kind of go into this, what do you, how do you define temporarily? So everybody has a different, so it was one of those kind of clarifying the code, removing really vague language, because what I consider temporary might not be what the business considers temporary, or vice versa. So just removing some of that, that vague language, so we don't get into semantic interpretations.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director. Next, we have an ordinance 6929. Director Gau will be talking to us about this ordinance concerning a city vacating right-of-way. And apparently.
Yes, and I have Amber Olds here, who is our right-of-way specialist. She's going to walk through this particular request for a vacation, as well as give the council a little background on what right-of-way vacations are.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. As Ingrid said, I'm going to give you a little background on what a right-of-way vacation is before we discuss the actual right-of-way vacation, VAC 23-0001. So consistent with state law, the city authorize, is authorized to process right-of-way vacations under chapter 12.48 of the Auburn City Code. What is a right-of-way vacation? Essentially, it's the process by which the city releases our interest in the right-of-way, and it's then returned to the properties that are entitled to receive it. Right-of-way vacations do not release the city's interest in real property, facilities, or easements. Generally, a vacation is proposed because right-of-way is unopened, not used for intended street or transportation purposes, or the proposed, it's proposed to facilitate redevelopment of a property or solve other property issues. Right-of-way vacations can be initiated by either the city or the adjacent property owners who have an interest in the right-of-way. The process for both types is essentially the same with the city-initiated process requiring some additional notifications and provisions for adjacent property owners to file objection and potentially prohibit the city from moving forward with a city-initiated vacation. Presentation today will focus on an adjacent property owner-initiated vacation. Property owners who wish to initiate a vacation must submit a petition from two-thirds of the abutting property owner's signature in favor of that vacation. City staff along with franchise utilities and other parties that have an interest in the right-of-way will review the application and determine if the right-of-way could be vacated, and if there's any conditions for easements that should be required, or other conditions. During review, city might require the applicant to submit additional information that it could include maps, plans, surveys, legal descriptions, appraisals, and any other information that the city might need to do a full review of the right-of-way. The city will prepare a staff report upon completion of the review and outline any conditions recommended in respect to vacation for city council's consideration. Conditions could include reservation of easements for affected city utilities or other users of the right-of-way, and possibly a requirement for compensation for the right-of-way or other conditions. A public hearing is unscheduled. During the public hearing, city council will hear a public comment on the proposed vacation. Council may choose to authorize the vacation by ordinance or deny it, or council can choose to modify, change, omit, or add provisions and stipulations as a condition of granting the vacation. With regards to compensation, per statute, Auburn City Code and state statute, council may require compensation for the full value of the right-of-way if it was acquired at public expense, or if it has been right-of-way for more than 25 years. Otherwise, the council may require one-half of the value of the right-of-way. Value of the right-of-way is determined by an appraisal that the applicant is required to submit during the review process. However, if the right-of-way is anticipated to be of a value less than $2,000, the appraisal may not be required due to the cost of completing an appraisal exceeding the value of the right-of-way. Previous city councils have not always required compensation. If the city acquired the right-of-way through dedication of a plat or other mechanism that was at no cost to the city, or there are significant cost benefits to the city such as reduced maintenance costs, those requirements for compensation were not required. If council authorizes the vacation and the required conditions are fulfilled, then vacation ordinance is reported with the county and takes effect. The county will determine who the right-of-way goes back to, which properties receive it. Are there any questions on the general process? I know I went through that kind of fast.
Councilmembers, anyone have a question?
All right, I'll move on to the application at hand. So right-of-way vacation, VAC 23-0001, is for a proposed vacation of approximately 4,950 square feet of right-of-way located within a portion of 108th Avenue Southeast that lies south of but does not connect to Lee Hill Road. It's shown in green on the map on the screen and also on page 71 of 204 of your agenda packet. The applicant, Sergey and Lilia Boyko, have applied for the right-of-way vacation and are proposing to incorporate the area into their adjacent private property parcel to the east to resolve encroachment and maintenance issues. Portion of the west side of the house is currently located in the right-of-way on 108th Avenue. You can kind of see it right there. The proposed right-of-way vacation area originally became right-of-way in 1976 when it was deeded to King County as right-of-way for a requirement for King County short plat that created the applicant's parcel prior to their ownership. The house was existing in 1976, and King County records indicate that it was built in 1920. The area was annexed into Auburn City limits in 2000. The proposed vacation is bordered on the east by the applicant's property, private property to the north, and then right-of-way on the west and south sides. Public work staff along with other city departments and jurisdictions and utility purveyors that have an interest have reviewed the application and determined that it's not necessary to meet the needs of the city and could be vacated. Staff is recommending that easements be reserved over the west 10 feet of the proposed vacation area for existing and future city water facilities, and Puget Sound Energy, Electric Facilities, and Comcast Cable Facilities. Additionally, there's an existing easement in place under King County, recording number 5662631 from 1963. It grants access to that parcel to the north that abuts the right-of-way, and it gives them access for easements, just regular parcel access and utilities. That easement will come forward and remain in place if the vacation is approved, so they will maintain their access and their right to cross over that property if it's vacated. Staff also recommends that compensation for the value of the right-of-way not be required as it was initially deeded as right-of-way associated with development at no cost to the city. And then public benefit from this vacation would include a decrease in right-of-way maintenance obligation. A public hearing to consider the application and hear public comment is currently scheduled for next Monday, the 20th, that's the city council meeting. Happy to answer any questions on this application.
Council have any questions? Yes, Councilmember Paul.
Thank you. I remember seeing this one come up and thinking it was rather unique that it was smacked on top of their house, so I can see the interest in vacation.
I just, let me, since it's built right on that right-of-way, isn't it grandfathered in? Or how does that work?
It is still considered in the right-of-way.
So, so the right-of-way was granted to the city, so it is a right-of-way, or to the county at the time, and then inherited by the city through annexation, so it is in the right-of-way. So they don't have a legal right to that property, because public right-of-way, in essence, is owned by everybody. So you can't have an individual owner owning that particular right. So, at the beginning of this, King County probably shouldn't have done the dedication with where the house was built, so this is really kind of a fixing of a past issue.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, appreciate your presentation. Next up, we have a ordinance 6932, dealing with the transfer of city telecommunications franchise from Sprint to Sprint.
Amber, giving you a quick briefing and background on franchises with this one as well before going into the specifics for this particular action.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a lot of franchises coming up this year, so hopefully this overview is helpful. Franchise agreements, consistent with federal and state law, the city is authorized to exercise local authority with respect to regulation of activities of utility telecommunications and cable companies, including utilities such as electric, gas, water, sewer, and storm that have their facilities, or would like to locate their facilities in the public ways of the city. Under Title 20 of the Auburn City Code, utility telecom and cable companies that want to locate their facilities in specific areas of the city, specifically streets and roadways, are required to obtain a franchise agreement with the city. Regulation of these companies and their facilities through a franchise agreement allows the city to permit and manage reasonable access to the public ways of the city on a competitively neutral basis, conserve the limited physical capacity of the public way held in public trust by the city, and fairly and reasonably protect public health, safety, and welfare. It also assures the utility telecommunications and cable companies utilizing the public way complied with ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city. Assures that city's current and ongoing costs of granting and regulating private access and use of the public way are fully paid for by the person seeking to use such, or use, seeking to use or access such right-of-way, and causing such costs to the extent allowed by applicable state and federal law. A franchise agreement does not allow a utility telecommunications or cable company to place their facilities on private property, or on city property or facility such as a water tower or buildings. Those types of uses would require lease, license, easement, or some other applicable agreement with property owners for such use. With regards to process, for an applicant to obtain a franchise agreement, the applicant must first submit an application, which is reviewed by city staff for completeness within a prescribed timeframe. A complete application requires that the applicant submit certain information required by city code, including an application fee. If the application is determined complete, or if it's determined incomplete, staff will inform the applicant of what the application requirements are outstanding and require additional information, and the deadline for re-submital. Once the application is determined complete, city staff will forward draft agreement language to the applicant, and negotiations can begin. The negotiations with the applicant start by using a standard form franchise agreement, and specific details applicable to the utility telecom or cable facilities and services and language is mutually negotiated. Some of the standard requirements for applicants, including, include providing insurance, indemnification and hold harmless provisions, financial securities, and that the applicant obtained construction permits prior to installing facilities. Other provisions include the requirement that the applicant relocate or underground their facilities at no cost to the city to accommodate city projects and capital improvements. Depending on the type of facility they're proposing, the city could require higher insurance limits, additional bonding, or specific emergency response language, or other language specific to their facilities and services provided. Any proposed language revisions are reviewed by city staff, including our legal and management. Once the language is substantially agreed upon at the staff level on both sides, city staff drops up final documents and a schedule to, for the agreement to come before city council for discussion and consideration. State and city code dictate that the city must hold a public hearing for new or renewal applications before city council can make a decision on the application. If council approves a franchise, applicant must then submit any required outstanding fees, insurance documentation, financial securities, and a statement of acceptance within a specified time period for the agreement to be valid. The applicant contain, can obtain construction permits and build and install their facilities once that franchise agreement takes effect. With regards to an assignment or transfer, which is what is coming before you tonight for discussion, an existing franchise agreement generally has provisions requiring a franchisee and a proposed assignee to submit certain information to the city to request that transfer. It's consistent with city code. Such information generally includes a complete application, complete information setting forth the nature and terms and conditions of the proposed transfer, a non-refundable application fee, and any other information that city staff deems necessary to provide a complete review of their proposed transfer. Assignments and transfers don't generally require a public hearing, but they must be approved by city council. With regards to city council's determination to approve or deny a franchise, there's specific criteria that you must base your decision on. This includes whether or not the applicant has received all required licenses, certificates, authorizations from any applicable federal or state agency having jurisdiction over the activities, the capacity of the public ways to accommodate the applicant's proposed facilities, and additional facilities if the franchise agreement is granted, the availability of alternate routes or locations of the proposed facilities, the damage or disruption, if any, of public or private facilities, improvements, services, travel, landscaping, and any other infrastructure of the agreement is granted, public interest in minimizing the cost and disruption of construction in the public ways, the services that the applicant will provide to the community and the region, the effect, if any, on public health, safety, and welfare to the extent allowed under any applicable federal requirements, the ability of the applicant to meet all construction and engineering design standard requirements, including mitigation of the city's, to the city's satisfaction of any future conflicts, restoration, deterioration, maintenance, and warranty, a demonstrated ability and commitment to meet city bonding and security requirements, and any other factors that may demonstrate the franchise will serve the community interest. Is there any questions about franchise agreements?
Council, do we have any questions?
Lot more information.
I don't see any questions.
Okay, so moving on to the transfer of the Sprint to Sprint. Consistent with Title 20 in Auburn City Code, Sprint Communications Company LP currently holds a franchise agreement, FRN 21-0003, which was authorized by ordinance number 6887 in November of 2022. This agreement is for fiber optic telecommunications facilities that are currently in the city's public ways, located in six east-west road crossings through the Union Pacific Railroad property that runs north-south through. When the city granted Sprint's franchise, Sprint was owned by and a subsidiary of T-Mobile USA Inc. The city received notice from Cogent Infrastructure that they were acquiring 100% of Sprint's assets and liabilities from T-Mobile, including the facilities and financial responsibility associated with Sprint's franchise agreement. Per the provisions of city code and section 18 of the franchise agreement, Cogent has submitted all of the required transfer application information and a written promise to unconditionally accept all terms and conditions of the franchise agreement. Cogent's application information and unconditional promise were reviewed and found to be complete per city's code requirements and requirements of Sprint's franchise agreement. Sprint is now owned by and a subsidiary of Cogent, sorry, Sprint now owned by and as a subsidiary of Cogent will continue to operate the facilities in the public way under the current agreement. If the request for a transfer is approved, the franchise agreement for the legal entity of Sprint as a wholly owned subsidiary of T-Mobile can transfer, transfer to the legal entity of Sprint as a wholly owned subsidiary of Cogent, a lot, subject to the terms and conditions outlined in ordinance number 6932. In bringing this forward for council review, city staff have verified that it meets all of the code requirements that council must base your decision on. We intend to bring ordinance 6932 forward to council at the February 20th meeting for council's determination. Happy to answer any questions on the transfer.
Councilmembers, do we have any questions?
I mean, this just seems like a response to M&amp;A activities between Sprint and its parent company, so.
It is, it's important that we do these though, just because it allows the city to manage our. manage our company effectively and know who's out there utilizing it.
Oh, no, I fully support doing it. I think the question is, is there any reason that we wouldn't support that?
Not that I can think of.
That's sort of what I figured, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that thorough report. So, next on the agenda, we have a modification. Our Resolution 5753 is being rescheduled. So, the next part of the meeting will be chaired by the Special Focus Area for Municipal Services, and that is chaired by Councilmember Yolanda Trapp.
And Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, but it's not me. That is Councilmember Rakes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mine was the Wellness Committee, this one and the other.
Well, that wasn't a special focus area.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's what I thought, but it's hers.
I tried to put her here.
I will move, do you want to do it there?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine. So, our next presentation is going to be the Auburn Teen Leadership Presentation with Director Hinman Faber. We have lots of guests. It's gonna be fun.
Let me kick it off, so that the other group, what we're doing here this evening is just kind of doing a presentation on both the youth council and the Auburn Junior Council, because it's Junior City Council, because many get confused between what one does and what the other does. And so Dana, Director Hinman, she oversees the Junior City Council, my department, Parks, Arts, and Recreation, we oversee the youth council. So, Keisha, and Keisha Taylor and Kelly Murray are with the Parks staff, and then Dana has her group here from Auburn. So, we both know, this is both amazing group right here, so good things are happening with teens in Auburn.
Yes, they are, thank you, Director Faber, for that lovely introduction. Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, good to see you all this evening. Are you driving this first part?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Actually, we're gonna let Maddie drive.
All right, Maddie.
Trust me the most.
I can introduce myself, I don't think I know every, well, I know the S majority. For the ones who do not know me, I'm Keisha, I am the Recreation Coordinator for Parks, the emphasis on teens. So, I'm mostly responsible for all the teen programming that goes in the teen center. So, youth council is one, and of course camp after school is some of our one-off amazing programs that we have to offer for the teens. I'm gonna let Maddie drive the boat.
I'll go from here, hi everyone. I'm Maddie Lindsay, I am one of the advisors for Auburn Youth Council. I brought one of our council members here today, this is Haley Murray, and so she'll share in a minute what she likes about the Auburn Youth Council, and let's get started. Wait, I have to start out, I won Miss Auburn on Saturday, and I was the only one that knew everyone's names, so.
I was the only one that knew all the council members' names, right?
I can't answer, I'm a judge. And the answer was there.
I didn't look at there, I made eye contact with you, so I knew, I knew. I was proud of myself for it, so I had to share. So anyways, Auburn Youth, I can't read that first, I'm gonna read my own notes. The Auburn Youth Council is a service learning and leadership development group that gets teens active in the Auburn community and to also serve as the liaison for the teens in the community. I think one of our biggest things that sets us apart from other groups is that we're active in the community. You see us everywhere, you see us at events all across citywide, and we're growing. We currently have eight active members, and the more events that we do, the bigger we get, and that's our biggest thing, is we're a peer leadership group, so when kids see other kids leading, they want to do the same. So, we're youth-serving youth, 100%. Currently, all of our representatives are students from Mount Baker Middle School, Rainier Middle School, and this is Auburn and Riverside High School, but we also have Mountain View kids, so we're all across the entire city, and we're proud of that. To join the Auburn Youth Council, the members are required to fill out an application that is reviewed by our advisors, they're more so approved by Kelly back there, but I get to do the fun part, I'm just welcoming them, so she does the hard part. Let's see if I'm right on where we are. Our values, so our values are character, inclusion, kindness, support, and empowerment, and like I said before, we're just there to uplift them. So many of these kids in our communities have great ideas, they just don't know what to do with them, and that's where we give them that voice, that's what Auburn Youth Council is all about. They have amazing ideas, and they're so eager to learn and teach and just be out serving their community, and that's where we come in and we give them that platform to do so. Our benefits, I again can't read that far, I don't know why I'm trying, I can't read that far either, so. They get a sense of confidence, they become decision-makers, they learn more about themselves and each other, they make an impact citywide, and it's just really a positive peer influence. Like I said before, when you see people serving the community, you want to do the same. That's the number one thing that comes out of the Auburn Youth Council. Our service projects, I'm all over the place here. So, some things we've done recently, we have hosted a charity clothing drive for those in need, we started a teen closet at the rec, so a lot of our low-income families, when they are, they don't have a lot of clothes to wear, we notice them wearing the same outfits every day, we offer them the closet where they can go, especially if they're going in for job interviews or things such as that, they're able to kind of go pick out what they need, sometimes they need jackets, sometimes they need workout clothes, if we notice they're playing in the gym in their jeans every day, we give them a pair of basketball shorts. So, really just try to give them, seeing what their needs are and really meeting those needs across the community. We participate in community cleanups to beautify Auburn, our clean sweep that we all participate in, we're doing that again here in a couple months. We host fundraisers for teen programs, local nonprofits, and general teen support. Again, youth-serving youth, they see an issue with youth and they're there to fix it, they're there to be that supplier. And we participate in giving trees for teens, provide meals for families in need during the holidays, and we also adopted 14 kids from Cascade Middle School to make sure that they had presents to open on Christmas morning this year, so we're pretty proud of that. Fundraising, sorry if I'm going too fast, stop me, I guess, do I, do I stop as I go, or at the end you ask questions, why do I do this? Okay, like stop me if you need to, but I get excited, so I talk a lot. Our fundraising, and this is average since 2021, we do a teen snack shack at the rec after school, and that brings in about $900 annually. At Kids Day, we sell hot dogs, question? I'm pretty new to this, so I'm still learning as we go. I'm still learning. And we bring in about $2,000, and at Pet Palooza, we do concessions as well, and we earn about $3,000. So, we're hoping to keep going with our fundraising, raise more money, the more we're out in the community, the better it gets. This goes towards training and retreats, program scholarships, events, and then our Giving Tree as well. Some future projects that we're excited to work on, we have been in contact with the National Alliance of Mental Illness, and we want to participate in mental health awareness walks and fundraise for the cause. Recently, we worked at Auburn High School with, I think, someone over here, maybe, maybe, maybe not, there's someone at Auburn Youth Council, or Junior City Council, sorry, yeah, I was like somewhere over here, I worked. We've done mental health fairs, community service is a lot for your mental health. When you give back, it gives you a sense of fulfillment, and so we really want to drive into that, especially, most of our kids are sixth to 12th grade, and those are hard grades to get through, and so we really want to feed into their mental health, and community service goes a long way. We want to connect with more local organizations, building those relationships with the Auburn Youth Council, and really creating more events with more nonprofits. We want teens to feel empowered and have a voice in the community. We recently have been in contact with the King County Library Systems, and we want to promote reading for teens and read to younger peers as well. We're making a list of books that our Auburn Youth Council kids enjoy and kind of sharing that. We need to get back in the library, I feel like everything is so online these days, and we want to be just feeling, but the books and all the things. And then again, our peer-to-peer mentorship program, we want a positive peer influence, and we want to understand the importance of positive peers. And that's all I have for today, I want to share, so this is Haley, do you want to introduce yourself?
Um, hello, my name is Haley Murray, I'm in sixth grade, and I'm 12 years old, I go to Mount Baker Middle School, and one thing I enjoy being in the youth council is that I'm able to watch our community grow by us impacting it with our choices we need.
We give them, most of the decision-making all comes from the kids, and we give our ideas here and there, most of the time, they're like, we got it, guys, we got it, so we let them make most of their decisions. Do we have any questions?
I do, I have a question, is that okay? Wait, who has the first?
No.
It's you?
Me. Fantastic, I have to applaud you for the work that you're doing, it is awesome as a mom, or a bonus mom of a 17-year-old daughter, this is right up her alley, so I'm really just encouraged to see this and the smiling faces on this. I know how important it is, especially with our low-income families, with the teen closet and whatnot, is there a way that this can continue to stay open, do you continue to take donations, or is it just a one-time deal?
So, we just started this teen closet, and we look forward to growing it more, we want to promote it more across the city, so more kids, even if they don't come to the rec, can know about it, so we're planning on promoting it a lot more and marketing it, so more kids can have that, that as a resource.
We also want to add like hygiene items in that closet as well, because that seems to be a pretty big need, from what I see anyways, at the rec, but we're building relationships with the schools, so it's a little bit easier to kind of identify students who do need that help. So, yeah, it's, it's beginning and it's, it's growing pretty fast, but yeah.
Is, okay, sorry, can I follow up, is that okay? So then, if someone wanted to make that donation, or a family, or a teen wants to make that donation, that's open at all times? Fantastic.
Yeah, I am over at the Community and Events Center, well, right beside the, at the rec, I'm there all day, the rec is open from two to five each day after school, so we're open pretty much all day.
And how can one get involved? She can.
We didn't bring a chair for her up here, but.
Yeah, we started the idea, so I'm Kelly, I'm the supervisor, I'm the supervisor of the teen center. Yeah, we, I just noticed a lot as our teens were coming in from school, just the need as far as, the biggest thing is basketball, like they come up to us every day, and now it's like basketball shoes, but they wanted like basketball shorts and all this, and then it began being like, oh, we need hygiene items, everything like this, so they wanted feminine projects or products and all of that. But our idea is to kind of make this a program-ish, where other organizations and other schools and students can do their own collections, we get so many emails that are like, hey, what can we do for the community, what can our group do? So, this is an idea as far as for other groups to come in, Miss Auburn, Tammy really wants to do something with it as well, just to get them doing service with the Auburns and youth-serving youth, how crazy. But yeah, so this is gonna be, you can just contact us anytime, and we can figure out some way to start up the donation or collection.
Do we have any other questions?
I know that Auburn High School, Kelly Jansen, she, they have a program similar to this, where if a student needs clothes, they've got a closet, and they give them a fake dollar bill, dollars, and they can go over to the, the hand, what is that, like a clothing store right on Main Street, do you know what I'm talking about?
Their store right across from our school.
Right, and, and the kids can go and pick out whatever they want, they just go in there, get shoes, whatever, whatever they want, whatever they need, so I was just wondering if the other schools have something like that, because this is a great program in Auburn.
So, I've heard about that, I was talking to her actually this morning, I left my phone this weekend at the Paget, so I had to go pick it up this morning, but I ran into her, and I kind of was telling her about Auburn Youth Council, we had that conversation today, and none of the other schools, it's only Auburn High School, so we're hoping to, whether we collaborate with them, or just kind of get the idea out there, this is open to all teens in Auburn, so I'm excited.
It's a fabulous job, went, program, when I went in there and she took me to this big room, we got bags and piles of clothes, then they give them money to go over to across the street to that place, so.
We're hoping to grow ours to be that big as well, absolutely. Yep.
One question I have that I've sometimes heard from youth in the community is that bullying can still occasionally be an issue, what's been your experience with that, and how are you guys working on that one?
Bullying, we, we don't stand bullying, we had one, one occasion, and we nipped it in the bud right away. We said, that's not what a leader does, we all know that, when you're a leader, you do not bully, you do not put other people down. We tried to even give them a warning, and they pushed their boundaries, and they were not welcome back, we said if they can grow up, then they can more than welcome them back. Leaders are meant to be mature, and that's what we want to help them do, is become mature.
I was thinking, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Not so much even within your council, but within the schools that you guys are a part of as students, do you see it in those spaces?
All right, for sure.
Absolutely, yes. Well, and a lot of the, the kids, they identify, we ask them a lot, like what they want to accomplish as far as in the AYC program, and a lot of them do say bullying in the schools. So, there's, we have a lot of ideas as far as raising awareness within the schools, but there's always so much potential as far as what can we do as far as activities to do bullying, but yeah, so our youth are really, like, passionate about that as far as the bullying issues, they're always taking ideas, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, I will say that I've had the lovely privilege of working with these two lately, and so I'm really excited about your program and what's to come, and I thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
We're not, we're not done yet.
Yeah.
Adam, Sharon.
Mainly talking to those two, but. So, once again, Dana Hinman, Director of Administration, and one of my other duties as assigned is to staff the Auburn Junior City Council, so I just wanted to give you all just a little background about how this came about, kind of some of the things that we're doing, and talk a little bit about how these two groups have been able to partner over the years, it just seemed like a great idea, a few years ago with Keisha's predecessor, and so we've been able to partner, but we also have kind of two different missions and functions with the things that we're doing. So, the Junior City Council started back in 2013, and if memory serves, I do believe that Mayor Backus was a little bit of the brainchild behind that, she was on the city council at the time, and there was just some conversation about having some sort of opportunity for youth to learn kind of the legislative process and be a part of the legislative process here in the city of Auburn, and up on the board is our very first appointments, one of those might look very familiar to our city clerk. And, yes, Sidney was, was a very active and, and one of our inaugural members, and so back in 2013, council passed the ordinance, and we had, I think it was 11 members appointed in that first group, not all are pictured here, but this is, this is our first group, and I think there's, wasn't Olivia Miss Auburn too?
Yep, I was just looking at her, I was like, yeah, she was Miss Auburn's teen two years before I was.
Yeah, so, really cool group, group of kids, and we've kind of been going strong since, and the, we've made changes throughout the years, it's, it's been very iterative since we started back in 2013, when we first started, it was, they met once a week, we met on the same night, a city council, we first thought it would be great to have whoever was the deputy mayor to lead the group, and then realized there's a different deputy mayor every year, and so each deputy mayor kind of had their own interest or ideas, and so it was kind of hard to kind of create kind of a sustainable, consistent program. So, we made the change to have it fully staffed by a staff member, and then the deputy mayor act more in a liaison role. So, hopefully, any of you might be able to get an, an opportunity to interact with, with these kids during your time on council. And some of our, our past achievements is, we, we like to try to have them experience the legislative process in some way, shape, or form, and each year, we're either coming forward and asking for a change in the language and the ordinance that governs the Junior City Council, just kind of making little tweaks here and there sometime to make it more accessible, which was the last request that we, we came forward with, and saying we want the entire Auburn School District to be eligible instead of just the city limits because the Auburn School District- because the Auburn School District encompasses both Pacific and Algonah. And this group wanted to ensure that all of those folks that apply that go to Auburn schools have an opportunity to be on the council. One of the very first things that the Junior City Council did is one of our former council members, Councilmember Holman, who was at the National League of Cities Conference that many of you will be attending soon in Washington DC, found that they had a youth delegate program. And so he encouraged the Junior City Council, which is probably one of the scariest things to do, is to go ask the city council for money. And to be able to fund them, being able to take a trip to Washington DC and participate in that youth delegation program. So I do believe that was shortly after they were formed in 2014-ish. And asked the city council to fund four members and a chaperone to go to Washington DC. And we need, and one of the first partnerships we did with the Auburn Youth Council was ask whoever's leading the Youth Council to be the chaperone for the kids. And it's worked out great. They haven't lost one yet. They all go. It's been very fun. And I think one of the funniest stories from Washington DC was Keisha's predecessor. And they put in some steps when they were in Washington DC. And one night I walk in and they're all kind of sitting in the lobby completely exhausted. And one of them looks at his pedometer on his watch and says, we've put in 20,000 steps. Like begging to stop. So they are active, they have a lot of fun there and you'll see. Are you four going? Is this the four?
It's us three and then Councilmember Lewick.
Okay. So you will get to travel with them. Like I said, we want them to learn the legislative process. So we do throw them in front of you and ask you to make a decision. So far, we have a perfect record. You've never said no. So we're happy about that. And one thing I was really proud of was the council, the Junior City Council that served during COVID. They were quite amazing. They came to us and were very concerned about their friends out there during the pandemic, especially with their mental health. And the mayor at the time was hosting virtual town halls at the time to just try to stay connected with the community as much as possible. And they asked the mayor, like, can we do a town hall on youth mental health? And she very graciously said yes. They led it, they did their own surveys, they called their own guests. And it gives me goosebumps just thinking about that night and the conversation that they were able to have with the community on that topic. They volunteer and appear everywhere as you've heard. I think many of you did the Santa breakfast, I think, or the breakfast at the Senior Center. So these folks like to get out in the community as well and be a part of things. And while they do like sitting at the dais and using the microphones and feeling important and having a gavel, because we do learn Robert's Rules of Order and the Open Public Meetings Act, which our counterparts in parks don't have to learn any of that. But we do. And it was also decided that the chair of this council would also serve on the Transportation Advisory Board. So they get to learn infrastructure and transportation stuff from my colleague in Public Works. So anyway, I just, I feel like they've done a lot in their short time. We try to let them design their program and do what works best for them as a council and, you know. And so this is our current council. You have four of them sitting with us today. And just, we'll start with our chair. Brief introduction, what school you go to, why you're here, what college you might have gotten accepted to recently.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Emily Helms. I'm chair of the Junior City Council and I serve on the Transportation Advisory Board also. I'm a senior at Auburn High School. I've always been like interested in politics. And especially after COVID, I got even more interested in it as I learned more about like civil rights and social issues. So I heard about the Junior City Council and I was like, this is a great opportunity. I'd love to be here. So I applied and I got accepted. And I've been on the Junior City Council for two years now. So, and relating to what Director Hindman was talking about, I recently got into Harvard, so.
Oh, all right. So I'm Patricia Amadeo. I'm a senior at Auburn Riverside. And I've been on the Junior City Council for basically a year now. I was sitting in for a while, partially because of, like we mentioned earlier, some tweaks to the ordinance. I have been in the Auburn School District for my whole life, but I live technically in Pacific. So we had to do some changes. And part of the reason why I really love Auburn Junior City Council is because it really gives an opportunity for me and for others to like advocate for ourselves, like in, like hand in hand with the whole tweaking of ordinances. It's like, it's important to know that you have a voice and that there are ways to get your voice out there. And even if there are like some technical issues, there's always a way to like talk it out with people and make sure your voice is heard. And yeah, I think it's just important for youth to know that there is opportunities to share what you feel and what you think is best for the community.
And then I'm Member Ocedes Romero Caldera. I've been on the Junior City Council for about a year now. Chair Helms actually introduced me to the idea. I've always been super involved in politics and just the legislative process in general fascinates me. I serve on the Senate Board for Green River College and it's always been just a passion of mine to be involved. I was recently accepted to Stanford University. I will be studying political science there, so I'll keep my passion going. And it's been great to be part of the process and just really be able to advocate for the youth of Auburn.
Hello, my name is Member Luan Musin and I'm currently a sophomore at Auburn High School. When I first got into high school, I joined the debate program and I met Chair Emily and Member Ocedes. And they were both on the Junior City Council and they introduced me to it. And I thought it was amazing that students from middle schools and high schools could have a voice, the actual council itself. And I think with the actual council, the Junior City Council together, we can give a voice to the entirety of the city. And I think the voice of kids in high schools and middle schools is paramount to making decisions within a city.
And in our speech and debate program at Auburn High, we do student congress. So it's like we're passing this like fake legislation. And it's really interesting to see like how that like transfers into like local politics. And like when we got our ordinance tweaked, so it was really interesting, yeah.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for?
I have a suggestion. When you go to National League City, look at your daily schedule. I would like to have all of you go to an advocacy committee. We have six of them. We have Hilo, we have Apamo. Apamo's all the Asians. We have Leo, who is African-American. We have the Indigenous, which Chris Sterns, our council member was here, him and another lady, started that group and it's starting to grow. And then we have Wimage, which is all for just women. And it'd be nice to have you guys go in there and represent Auburn. You know, just go in there and it's too late to get a ticket for the dinner or the luncheon that they're going to have. But I'm sure they'll let you in there to go in and hear what they're saying. And I will put a little bug in some of those chairs, ears.
Thank you.
That sounds like a really nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, guys, what are you looking forward to taking away from Washington DC in your visit there?
Well, for me, one thing, it's more of a personal reason, the first thing. I've never been like on the East Coast. And just being able to go to DC in the first place is a big opportunity and I'm very thankful for the opportunity for that. But second, I'm really excited to just like meet more people and kind of just get a lot more experience from it. Just generally like meeting and learning more about like being a leader and being a voice in the community and just like getting a lot of more connections outside of Auburn.
I agree with Patricia on like learning how to advocate for ourselves and being a voice in the community. I'm really excited to learn how like I can specifically use my voice and my standing in the community to really advocate for others and make a real change.
So I briefly looked over our agenda of the days that we will be there. And honestly, the meetings that we're attending and like the conferences, they sound so interesting. So I'm very excited to see like what they can offer us that we don't already know or like we wish that we could have known sooner.
Good answers, guys. Any more questions? Councilmember Baldwin?
Sure. Is there anything that we as council members can do in support of Auburn Junior City Council? Apart from funding to get to NLC? Anything you would look for?
Well, if I were to answer that question, is exactly what you're doing right now in supporting the, just supporting their work, supporting what they do. Because like I said, how it sort of morphed over the years is we thought it would be more like a civics thing. And we learned quickly that while that is important, the youth of the community want to do. They want to be active, they want to be in the things, which is what sort of prompted the partnership with the Youth Council because that is playing on their strength. And just being able to just work together in those areas where we can provide the platform. Because as Emily was just saying, sometimes it's hard to figure out where that is. And quite frankly, sometimes people in power don't want to share their platform. And so, which is why, you know, I talk about, you know, Mayor Backus just saying, yes, take the town hall. This is an important thing. We need those voices out there. Your friends obviously are hurting and we want to help them. So just anything that we can do to support it, while it might seem like a trite kind of thing, even just having them at the Santa Parade on the stage, being announced as leaders in the community. And, you know, being able to show up, you know, with their jackets or whatever. And just that visibility, I think, is, it's important, you know. Like, you know, peers seeing peers doing something and helping each other lead.
So I was going to add one piece is if you don't have an answer today for things that you would like to ask of council, you're welcome to reserve the right to come back and ask later. So you can take that with you as you go. And thank you so much for all that you guys do for the community.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for the great presentation. Unfortunately, I'm the only one that's not going to NLC. So you'll have fun with everybody else. So I hope that you learn a lot and bring a lot back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daryl, you're not sending your crew along with them?
Just one supervisor. It's all Keisha.
20,000 steps, that's the record.
I know, the last year we got it to 18.
So our next presentation, Director Martenson, is going to come talk to us about the review to review with council the July 2023 National Center for State Courts, council presentation and final report.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I am Candace Martenson, the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management for the city of Auburn. And I am here tonight to talk about the previous municipal court study. But before I do that, I just want to first and foremost extend the gratitude to bring this forward to you tonight for further discussion. I know we have some new council members. So I'm here to answer any questions and get everyone up to speed so that they understand what we're doing and how we're planning to proceed. I would also like to introduce some special guests that we have here this evening. So, oh, there they are.
Our eyes are too bad to see it for better.
Well, first and foremost is our new presiding judge, Rebecca Robertson. And then we have Judge Harn, who, and are you the assistant presiding judge?
Yes, I am.
Great. And then Yana Philippidis, who is our Operations Director for the King County District Court. So these are our partners that we work with on the district court. And they'll be available to answer any questions. But we actually have them slated to present at the next Municipal Services Focus Area. So for the chair and the vice chair, we'll have them in attendance at the meeting for our March meeting, our pre-meeting. And then they'll be here for the entire council in April. So I am going to jump in to PowerPoint and give a little bit of background on King County District Court services. So as a municipality, we are responsible for providing prosecution, defense, adjudication, sentencing, and incarceration of misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor offenses committed by adults within the city. And so I've listed out those big areas of misdemeanors and infractions that we are responsible for enforcing. Just to get the council up to speed on the history of our relationship with King County District Court, we ran a municipal court through the city of Auburn prior to 2012. And then effective November 1st of 2012, the city of Auburn entered into the King County District Court Interlocal Agreement. Or we shorten it to say ILA. So throughout the presentation, we might shorten that, but so you know what that document is. And then King County District Court processes and adjudicates cases for 13 municipalities, including the city of Auburn. I'll pause just for one. So you might be asking, what is the role of human resources and risk management in our relationship with King County District Court? So I get the privilege to manage the King County District Court contract for the city of Auburn. So as part of that management and that contract oversight, I ensure that we have compliance and effective resource allocation for all of those different services that we have to provide. I work quite a bit with the King County District Court staff as well as all of the Auburn stakeholders to try and resolve any operational issues. Our Office of Human Resources and Risk Management manages public defense. So we procure and manage those contracts as well as for our conflict attorneys. So if there's a case that has multiple parties involved, they all have to have their own legal representation. It's been challenging as of late to find different law firms that will provide those services. But we continue to reach out to try and make sure that we have all of those services providers. But that is not unique to Auburn. That what we found when we discussed with the previous presiding judge is that that is an issue for all of the King County District Court contract cities. So we've actually discussed the potential of us pooling resources. And maybe we could have conflict attorneys that are available for different jurisdictions based on calendaring and things like that. So that's a problem that we're trying to troubleshoot together. And then, so our public defense screening, we have an administrative professional on our team that goes down every Thursday and does the public defense screening in person. We do public defense screening online at any time. It goes through an application. And then we also do phone screening during business hours. So we've worked to help manage the work crew screening and assignment. Our Public Works Department right now actually physically manages the work crew that goes out. But we provide some support for that and then reporting to the court of those hours. And we've really tried to work with making the most cost-effective court services. So one of those pieces of that is we partnered with King County District Court to go through the interlocal agreement. and the cost model that they had, to try and figure out for the cities what costs were being distributed to the cities. And so there was actually some savings that were found through that and some items that we identified in the inter-local agreement of some areas of cost savings. So that was a great partnership with us and the King County District Court on that piece. And then the day-to-day court relations, so we work with our, our prosecutors, our public defenders, our administrative staff that does the public defense screening and the work crew, we work with Public Works. So we're kind of the, the clearinghouse or the center point for all of the challenges or issues to try and schedule the meetings, schedule the conversations, and move forward in that. So we're kind of one clearinghouse for, for all of those different issues to try and help mediate or align those. So bringing us back to the municipal court study. So we, and I'll, I'll talk about the calendar that we have in the inter-local agreement of the timelines that the City of Auburn has to look at how we provide our court services. But we're coming up on that first timeline of the new inter-local agreement to do this exploration with council. And there was some interest with some of the Auburn stakeholders to look at this more closely. Since my background and subject matter expertise is in human resources and not court operations, we entered into a contract with the National Center for State Courts. And they ended up doing stakeholder interviews. So they kicked off that project in November of two thousand and twenty-two. And then during the month of February, they did site visits to talk to all of the various stakeholders. So I'll talk a little bit more in detail about who those were. But then they also looked at other cities that offer municipal court services. So we looked at Puyallup, Federal Way, Renton, Kent. And just to try and benchmark against other municipal courts because we wanted to do a, a full analysis for the council to be able to look at what would potential costs or operational changes that the city would need to make in order to stand up our own municipal court. And it is a fairly large undertaking if we chose to do it, both in time and resources, financial and otherwise. So the preliminary report was done in June of two thousand and twenty-three. And we did a presentation to the council at the time in June two thousand and twenty-three. And then the final report that I've sent to all of you was delivered in July. So those stakeholder interviews, so what we consider the City of Auburn stakeholders is the mayor, the police department, finance, legal, our public defense contract through, you may have heard previously that we use Casey and Grove for those services. And then we also used our chief equity officer for the Office of Equity to apply an equity lens to this. And I can talk a little bit more about that. And then we also talked to Representative from Score Jail. For King County District Court, we talked with the then-presiding judge, Judge York, the Auburn local judges, the therapeutic court manager, the court administrator, budget director, and the King County District Court clerks for Auburn. So what we found is a, a little bit of misalignment that was challenging, I think, for the National Center for State Courts to reconcile. And the findings were that the Auburn stakeholders that were listed there, the majority of them had a different perspective on the relationship with King County District Court than what King County District Court reported as their relationship with the City of Auburn. And so as you read in that report, there was misalignment there. And I think I have identified kind of the status of some of the issues that were in misalignment and where, where we stand on that. But I know that report is very lengthy, so I wasn't intended to summarize all of the areas of misalignment. But in that report, it does a very good job of determining kind of where the separation of perspectives was. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you've had that report. But I didn't necessarily want to focus too much on the previous presentation and just wanted to let everyone know where we are on the council and where we would like to go. So current developments, since we talked about this last, is we have the new King County District Court Presiding Judge, Judge Robertson. We also have a new chief prosecutor, so that was a reclassification of a vacant lead prosecutor position, and that is Charlotte Story. And so I've been working quite a bit with Charlotte Story and Tricia Grove, who is our primary public defense counsel, to try and streamline some of the issues that we're seeing. One of the big issues that's a little bit further down in this list is the court calendaring issues. So one of the issues identified by our chief prosecutor is us running up against speedy trial issues and really trying to partner with our public defense and our prosecution to make proposals to King County District Court that work for both of those stakeholders and both of those parties. With the goal being that if we can reduce any areas of conflict from us, then that we have a unified front and presentation to the King County District Court staff of what we need to be successful to run efficient, efficient and effective court operations. And as you probably have read, that was one of the big issues, was just ineffective court operation. So it's nice to have all the alignment on the City of Auburn side and some, you know, in-the-weeds proposed solutions to that. So we have some meetings on that today. And then we'll be meeting forthcoming with the presiding judge and also with the operations director for King County District Court as well. City of Covington, so that was one of the areas identified in the report where, this was historically before my time, that there was maybe a handshake agreement. I'm not aware of a written agreement, but a handshake agreement that the City of Covington could have their cases heard in our facility. But there was no lease and there was no rent charge for that. And there was discussion internally about entering into a lease with Covington and negotiating a rent charge. But I think due to the increase in case volume at the City of Auburn, that our interests now lie in having King County District Court here Covington cases at a different King County District Court location. So we're working with the presiding judge on that, but we have given official notice that we would like them to vacate our facility. And then there's also discussion of expansion of community court, which all of the stakeholders are behind in support of. There's just some logistics that we need to figure out on how to do that. So one of the cornerstones or pieces that's really important with community court is having the police involvement for the folks that are committing crimes, that they're engaging with in the community, and that there is that police department relationship. Given the, the current staffing challenges that the chief has shared with you all, expansion of a full day of that calendar on Thursdays would prove challenging for the police department to staff that. But we're trying to not let that be a barrier. So what we've discussed with our facilities department is expanding the city's security contract to include security that is provided for the City of Auburn during business hours to actually be provided for, at the screening for the community court space over at the ACRC building where the Resource Center and the Community Court calendars are held. So we have that ready to go. The last piece of discussing expansion of community court is also the impact on staffing, staffing for our contract, because we contract for public defense, but staffing with our public defender to make sure that they have enough attorneys to be able to be there. Because we would actually be managing three courtrooms at once, considering the traditional court and then the community court courtroom. So that's going to be a staffing challenge for prosecutors as well. So we need to come up with a solution for not only our conflict public defender, but also our staffing issues for our prosecutors as well. So those are recent updates that I know weren't memorialized in the, the report that I sent you. So at this point now, based on the timeline that you can see further down in the slides, so the King, King County District Court presiding, previous presiding judge had asked that if the City of Auburn is looking to form our own municipal court, that it would be, you know, kindly requested that we let them know sooner rather than later. And I can empathize with that because if we leave, then there's staff that supports this function. And so we would want to give them as much notice as possible to hopefully repurpose the staff in another capacity if there's vacancies in other courts that King County District Court, cities that they contract with. But the ILA actually stipulates when we would need to give official notice, and that's February first of two thousand and twenty-five, for that termination of the King County District Court services effective December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. So as I said earlier in the presentation, we have this opportunity every so often in the ILA. So this is our opportunity for this council to evaluate this and look at this for this term. The next opportunity would be February first, two thousand and twenty-nine, for termination effective December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty. And so what I'll be bringing forward for council approval dependent upon the cost of the study is, as I stated, my background and subject matter expertise is not standing up courts. So I would probably lean very heavily on the National Center for State Courts that we worked with on the municipal court study to help us determine the project planning and the timeline if the interest was to move forward on what it would take to stand up our own municipal court. There's a lot of legalities and process procedure timeline. Financial investments one-time or ongoing that would need to be considered for that. So my goal through this whole process was to give this council an opportunity to really take a hard look at this. I mean, it is, it's very important. I mean, it'll significantly impact our local judicial system. It's, it's a big change where we would be standing up another branch of government. So I don't take that lightly and I want to make sure that I present you all with, with very unbiased, neutral information to the best of my ability so that you can all make an informed decision. Big financial piece on this for the consideration is, and it's challenging because we do the two thousand and twenty-three reconciliation in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. So we're always a little bit behind. But part of the study for National Center for State Courts, that was very helpful, is to be able to build some type of an estimated cost if the city assumed the municipal court in two thousand and twenty-seven. So this doesn't take into consideration any one-time costs for the additional contract with the National Center for State Courts, any of the staffing costs, or any of the one-time investments, or technology investments, facility investments. This is just the estimated operating budget that it would take to run the municipal court in two thousand and twenty-seven if that was the decision. So as you can see, it's, I mean, forward forecasting. It's a little bit challenging, but we're talking about around a one-point-eight million dollar difference. So significant. And as we have budget discussions coming up this year and the biennium budget moving forward, I know there's a lot of competing interests for city funds. So just wanted to try and put some type of a dollar figure to that so you can think about that as you're evaluating the decision. So that was all I had for your presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any? Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, back to sort of the original root cause for doing the study that took place last year. You know, this is something that would have considerable cost and take a lot of time and effort to stand up. Can you help me understand maybe the root cause a little bit better? Because I've not heard anything in this presentation that would indicate something severe enough that I think would warrant that direction.
Yeah, so as I noted in the presentation, it wasn't my intention today to capture the study. I know that the study goes into the disparities between the Auburn stakeholders and the King County District Court staff. The major issue that was identified to me beyond what I believe is most likely a due diligence on our part to look at this, because we've contracted with King County District Court for, you know, over a decade, that there was about the time that I started here in June of two thousand and eighteen, expression of displeasure with King County District Court by Auburn stakeholders. So, you know, we have that stakeholder list that's identified. And, you know, I've identified and, and the presiding judge and the mayor and I met. There's been a list of things. And my intention in sharing these is not, it is for transparency in answering your question, not necessarily say that these are my issues, just issues that I represent as managing all these different stakeholders and the feedback. I think a big issue was the fact that in the, in the ILA and the cost model, King County District Court receives rent for contract cities that are renting their facility or using their facility. When I started here, we didn't have a lease with Covington. So essentially, King County District Court was subleasing our facility. And neither Covington nor King County District Court were paying a rent charge that they charged back to other partners or stakeholders. So to me, that was just an issue of fairness at face value. When I brought it up with the current presiding judge, I was given the impression that there wasn't an interest in entering into a lease or any kind of rent charge back to the facility, which then we're lending out a city facility and not managing that appropriately from a facilities management standpoint and a fairness standpoint on, you know, using the cost model that King County District Court uses for those facilities. It wasn't our intent to negotiate a higher lease than what they're charging other cities. So there was that issue. There was also an issue about court operations, which transparently, if we, and as the report states, if we appoint a judge, we may have an idea or a perspective of their judicial philosophy, of what accountability means in the criminal justice system for the City of Auburn. Now that could be subject to a reelection and then we don't have any of that control. And it was my understanding that the, there was several factors that went into why we contracted with King County District Court in the first place. But one of those being that the costs of the jail was significant based on judicial practices. And so that was one factor that was considered. So there could be some uncertainty still of what type of judicial practices there are. But there was expression of concern that, you know, at local court meetings or at the regional court meetings, that some of Auburn's issues weren't being heard, or some of the stakeholders felt like their issues were being dismissed. In addition, I think there was some challenges in COVID that was reported of court practices that were very difficult and trying to get the backlog of the case counts handled. There's been the speedy trial issues and setting calendars and efficiencies of those raised to me from Auburn stakeholders. So I think those are probably the, the biggest issues. And I will say that there has been some tension sometimes between the different stakeholders. And I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Sorry, just to respond back to that. Thank you for that refresher on it. And I think due diligence for reviewing contracts is always a fantastic idea. So, you know, if you came in and, you know, don't have a court background, which not everybody does everything, right? We all wear different hats. Makes sense to do that given the time that we had had. And so I appreciate kind of the quick refresh on that.
Any other questions? If I have some more hands?
I just have a comment. Thank you for saying transparent. Because we definitely need to be transparent when we're going into something like this. And I have also heard that when we changed back in two thousand and eighteen, I believe, or I can't remember what day we, we changed over to municipal court. It all had to do with the cost. And that's why we went the other way. And it had seemed to be working. And then all of a sudden, now we see that it's not working. So it's really nice to hear that we're going to be transparent on moving forward.
Well, just to respond to that, I, I would like to give credit to the presiding judge as well as I would like to give credit to the presiding judge as well as Yana, that they have, since Judge Robertson has taken over in January, she has reached out to try and address some of the concerns of the Auburn stakeholders. And so, you know, I am welcome to that. I think all of the parties are welcome to that and open. So, you know, I'm hopeful that some of these issues that have kind of garnered some steam over time can be addressed. But nonetheless, it's still a decision before you all as far as what you would like to do.
So I have different feeling because I've just reading the report. I know if we move to have our court here, we will appoint a judge. Again, even if we go election, they'll be local. The judge will be elected from the city. Then they will fully understand the issue going. Or even if they will not, there'll be term. Because my understanding, moving to the King County, I have different, I really need to, moving to be King County, even just reading the report, there is a lot like for us, for the city. When we had judge before here, yes, he was easy in the beginning. But when he sees same faces, they get to understand how they get harder. I'm just saying, reading the report, we will meet with the judge to understand what work. Personally, I don't want to look as a cost because it doesn't matter how much cost we will look, we lose. But we need to think what will work for all, for the stakeholder. Because sometimes we want to go like, okay, we want to say we will pay, let's say, a million dollar, but we're not getting the service. Then probably going 2 million and we get what need to be done. Just looking like using the court. That's mean we've been for years losing because we are maintaining the court. So it's really need to think about it. I have different respect for just thinking how that would go. Because we need stuff like to be local, be able to do our court. I see many city, like Mersfeld, they have even court jail, the mayor.
So just one clarification there. In the RCW 3.50.050, a judge of a municipal court need not be a resident of the city in which the court is created, but must be a resident of the county in which the city is located. So there is, it's not as it was prior to 1993. The judge can be selected from anywhere within the county.
But who will vote for it? The resident of the county?
So it's the residents of the city that would vote, I believe. I think it's, I think it's limited to that city. But the candidates can be from anywhere throughout the county.
So that's still okay. That's mean the resident of the city will make the decision because it's them who will pay at the end, so.
Yeah, so I think on this topic, it's interesting to me because when we look back at the former presentation materials that were provided, one of the things that it notes is a lack of consistency or judges not invested, things that, you know, would be unique to a judicial setting. And I think that going to municipal wouldn't necessarily solve some of these things because as a separate branch of government, we don't have control over that as a city. We would be standing it up. We would be, you know, paying for it to operate. But those judges operate based on state laws. And so I think the biggest factor that we've run into, you know, certainly is the city and most likely is a county, is that all judges have to operate in accordance with state law and then city law, right? And so the changes to go on, you know, to say we're going back to municipal, I think is a false assumption because what existed historically does not exist today from a ledger, from a code standpoint. And so I don't know if that's something that the judges present would want to speak to. But I think it's important to keep in mind that just going to municipal doesn't necessarily solve that issue, nor does it give us additional control.
I'm not mean to solve, but at least our issue, our, any, the court will be more faster. So people will not expand, like for, I heard in different, not in Auburn, some cases take four months or eight months before go to judge. So this is a speed thing. So if anyone traffic or non-traffic, all DUI will be quick, make a decision being done. By law would not. And I understand all the judge, they will go, doesn't matter. If we get any judge, they will be working by the law. But probably will be faster. We may have, as you read the challenge here, some language issue. Whereas Auburn more diverse, maybe we'll be able to, be able to have even more interpreter.
I was going to say, I think one of the concerns that I had and when it had been presented previously is that when we think about, you know, speed of the community's needs being addressed, is that moving to municipal would also remove certain court services that are available with a district court. That having it here in the city, things like name changes, which people do very frequently, I think no contact cases, and a few other services that you would want to have a very fast turnaround. If we go to municipal, they would still then have to potentially travel or take longer to go get to a different location for that. I think having that in the city is a beneficial thing for a lot of folks who need to have those court services provided and performed. So I think that's a factor we need to take into account as well as if the new presiding judge is working with us on addressing the concerns or issues that we've had historically with city of Covington operating in our spaces or taking that court time, getting them to a new location may free up additional time and speed up in the same path without necessarily having to pay the additional overhead.
Could we have any of the judges speak on some of the stuff that we have been saying here?
I'm more than happy to speak on this.
Sorry, Councilmember O'Neal, can you speak up, please?
I asked if we could hear from one of the judges on some of the issues that has been commented here. And one of the judges said she would be willing to come forward.
I'm more than happy to do that. Now, I can also do that during the study session in March and in April. But I'm happy to answer, there's, I of course have some responses to some of the concerns raised. I'm happy to do whatever you need.
You're the chair. I would hear it in a moment.
So thank you very much for having us. I know this is a really important decision for the city, and I certainly understand why you care about your justice system, and so do we. I understand that what kind of prompted some of the city's concern was there was a disconnect between the court and the stakeholders. And maybe King County District Court didn't view the relationship in the same way, is what I'm hearing. And I understand that, and I hear that. Maybe things aren't as rosy as we thought they were. But we are here to make it work and make things as efficient and give you as much justice as you deserve in this community. So I'm very happy to work with Auburn, to work on all these issues. I know that, I'll just comment on a couple of the things that you talked about, the ILA cost model with Covington not using the space and not paying rent. I know there's maybe a dispute on what the ILA actually says we are able to do with the space. However, we are trying to get Covington to move to the MRJC. I'm working on that right now. Because we know that Auburn has so many calendars and it's so busy that they could definitely use the space. So that's something that is in the works currently. In terms of, I know you had some questions about accountability and election, et cetera. Only the city of Seattle was actually required to choose a judge that lives in the city. And so every other city in the state, you just have to live in a county. I myself was a judge in federal way for 12 years, and I lived in Seattle. But I was reelected every year, and I can tell you I very much cared about what was going on in the community and the local concerns in the community. And we very much care about what the local concerns are here in Auburn, too. I just went to a meeting with the Police Accountability Board about, and heard from citizens who were very concerned about crime in Auburn. And I can certainly understand that. I still live in Seattle, and I understand the concern about crime. It happens in my community as well. So I want you to know that, I don't know what has happened previously, and I'm not sure what has happened at the regional meetings, but we are not dismissing Auburn's concerns. I certainly hear what those are. I should let you know that we do, we are through the COVID backlog for Auburn. So Auburn's completely caught up. And I, COVID is not, it's not totally gone, but it's not an issue anymore. We are doing hybrid calendars so people can come in person. And a lot of folks in Auburn actually come in person. We can also do hybrid calendars, so those things can work out. One of the, the election for Auburn actually happens in southwest King County. So all of Auburn, some areas and other cities, Renton, Covington, et cetera, would actually vote on the judges. So it's not all of King County voting on the judges in Auburn. It's actually fairly localized. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. In terms of your concerns about speedy trial, that's governed by court rule, and it's often governed by the attorneys as well. They ask for a continuance, and we either grant it or we don't. There are speedy trial issues in Auburn because there are so many cases and not enough room to hear them. So I'm actually coming down twice this month to handle extra calendars so that our judges don't have to, to get some of that backlog of three trials going. And we're working on a plan to keep that going so that we don't bump up against speedy trial. These are all issues that we can work together on and we can work out, and I'm more than happy to do that. Councilmember Baldwin is correct. If you did contract with the municipal court, you would lose the ability to have protection order, anti-harassment order hearings here in Auburn. And also, small claims are heard here in Auburn, as well as the frequent name changes. One of the things I did want to address about that report is there was some concern that maybe the judges weren't holding people accountable. Back in 2011, 2012, when the city decided to get, go with King County, the previous municipal court judge had put people in jail for years and years and years at a time, and it was busting the budget of the police department. And that was the impetus for going to the district court. You wouldn't have necessarily any more control over that if you went to municipal court now because you don't have any control over the judge's decisions. So it's up to that particular judge what they want to do. The philosophy may or may not change. You don't know. I can tell you that I did a comparative study on the populations of Auburn, federal way, and Kent. They all use score jail, and I averaged their average daily. They, federal way uses some other jail.
Kent doesn't either.
They are in their own jail. But I did do average, I'm sorry, I got the information. But I did average daily populations. And Auburn actually has twice as many people in jail per their population than Kent or federal way does. Auburn actually files more cases than federal way does, which is almost twice the size. So Auburn's really busy. And we have an understanding that you take crime very seriously and you want to hold people accountable, and our judges have been doing that. And you can tell by the jail members that we're doing that more than local cities are. So those are the kind of things that I kind of got out of the report that I definitely wanted to answer. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I'm not sure who the right person is to answer, so I'll just ask. When, if we're looking at moving into a space of doing an additional study for potential project planning, right? Which would be needed before any actual decisioning of, you know, switch or not switch. What were the original costs for the first study? And do you see the second study being as expensive or more so? I think, I'm trying to understand whether we should pay for the study if we feel it's even needed for the second portion, or if we feel like we're confident with the current trial.
So I can look that up. I wasn't prepared to answer the question of the previous study, so just one second.
Sure.
While she's doing that, I can tell you that Candace has been wonderful to work with, and we've worked with over the past two months. Two, has it been two months already since I've been presiding judge? She's answered all of my questions. She's given me all the information I need. She's fantastic to work with. So I'm happy to work with her more on whatever your needs are. I should do, tell you that you would need to get, document our case management system, and that would add about $30,000 to $40,000. That's a one-time cost, as well as all the computer equipment, standing up a community court, et cetera. And we don't have the cost for that. But I do know that the case management system would be about $40,000.
Councilmember?
You keep saying our stockholders. Who are all our stockholders? I mean stakeholders, I'm sorry. Who are all?
So for our stakeholder interviews was the mayor, police staff, finance staff, legal staff, our public defense, contract attorney, our chief equity officer, and a representative of score jail, of which we're a member owner.
Well, Director Martenson is looking that up. The other point I wanted to confirm on that Judge Robertson might be able to assist with is the function of the ability to select of the judges within King County. Can you refresh us on how that works?
So you get to have a pool of judges that you get to choose from, from our southwest district. And you can choose, I can't remember, Judge Harn, do you remember how many?
Four out of the five.
Okay.
So you get the next one of the judges.
Yeah, so you get to.
Every year, which is nice. And you couldn't do that if you had your own municipal court. You would be stuck with whoever you had.
Sorry, if you're going to speak, I need you to come forward.
A microphone's up here, Judge Harn.
I apologize.
Sorry. My microphone's only pick up from the table.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
Can you state your name for me? Sorry.
Just so you know, I was the judge that negotiated the ILA in 2012.
Judge, sorry, could you state your name for the record?
Karina Harn. I'm the Assistant Presiding Judge for King County District Court. Thank you, sorry.
And then did you want to state?
My answer to your question was that you have five judges in southeast King County, in your judicial district. And out of those five, you can indicate if you do not wish to have one of those judges be the assigned judge for your court. So you can always renix one of the judges, and you can do that every year. You have to make that decision, I think, by mid-September or early October. You make that decision, and then the presiding judge is expected to select judges to sit in the Auburn courthouse, hearing Auburn cases from the pool of four. Unless there's some emergency that might change that. And everyone, obviously, the presiding judge still has the right to make judicial assignments. So you don't get to take that away from us. And if we have a good reason to have someone else hear it, we would come. There's also an obligation on the contract that the presiding judge would come and tell you that. And the reason I'm answering this on behalf of Judge Robertson is because she's only been there a couple of months, and I've been there forever. So I apologize for stepping on her toes.
No, no, I appreciate that. You knew more about that particular section than I did. You have two judges. You have two out of the four that you can choose from. And we usually do two-year rotations. So you might have a couple different judges in a few years, but they'd be from a pool that you could strike one judge.
So the two judges would be for how long?
It's usually around two to three years. Judge Taguba will have been here by three years by the end of this year, and Judge Amato probably two years. Sometimes it's longer than that.
And then they'll switch.
Sometimes it's shorter because you didn't want, didn't, let the judge stay. So it depends on, the dominos fall sometimes, so sometimes it's shorter.
But we have enough to supply you with judges. And I'm also, can pull judges from other divisions to fill in when needed. And I have a plan for doing that to give, to assist Auburn because you guys are frankly our busiest court.
Councilmember Baldwin, you have?
Well, I think Director Martenson has the answer first.
Yes, so the National Center for State Courts contract for the municipal court study was $138,298,000. And there was funding in the court budget for that. So there, I believe the contract came forward because it was over $100,000, but it was able to be absorbed with the existing budget. And I don't have an indication as what the cost would be for the study on the project planning timelines and all the legalities that it would take for the city to stand up their own municipal court.
Yeah, for the existing contract as it stands, we know what the timeframe is for, you know, kind of giving the nod or not. Yeah, for the existing contract, um, as it stands, we know what the timeframe is, uh, for, you know, kind of giving the nod or not. With changes, as we're talking about as far as lease or sublease, if we have a facility issue and wanted to relocate the, uh, King County District Court into a different facility in the future, uh, what would that entail as far as a contract change or adjustment? Are we locked into that current facility?
So we own the Auburn courthouse. So I think it would be our interest to stay there versus paying a rent charge for another facility.
Okay.
I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, just looking at where facilities would fit in separate from the operating contract.
Our, our intent in discussing the lease and sublease with King County District Court is, um, there are some staff that are at the Auburn courthouse that don't work on behalf or aren't assigned to in the cost model to Auburn cases. And so in that case, if we apply the costing model that King County District Court uses to other entities, that they would pay a rent charge for those staff that are in that building. Um, and then likewise the sublease for Covington, which sounds like there's going to be a, um, a move of Covington. So hopefully that issue is shortly resolved. But as it stands now, they're still in the Auburn courthouse.
And these are all issues that I think we can definitely work out. In terms of the lease, I know we've been packing, passing it back and forth between lawyers, which is not the most efficient way to do things. So I suggested let's sit down in a, in a room together and hash that out. And so, um, I just followed up today again, saying who's the attorney and hopefully we'll be setting that up so we can hash out a new, um, a new lease and figure that out. We're working with Covington. And I know both the prosecutor and the defense attorney and have reached out with them and are gonna work with them on calendaring. So how can we make this work better? Because these are all, these are all things that we can fix. And we are committed to doing so.
I have a question. With our population growing the way it is, is it gonna be eventually that we have to have our own court anyway?
I, regardless of our population, we could either choose to have a municipal court or contract with King County District Court. Um, in order for them to provide that service for us, they may need to hire additional staff to provide the service. So, um, additional judges to hear court cases and things like that. Um, so I, I don't know that there's a direct tie in differences between the two.
Yeah, I did look at the filings and say Federal Way has, has two judges. Auburn's filings are actually a little greater than Federal Way. Um, and so, you know, we have the two judges and your filings have gone up 200% in the past year. So that wouldn't necessitate going to a municipal court. That just maybe necessitates more resources to the district court. But we're trying to find efficiencies where we can.
Thank you. Um, and one of the areas that I think as councilmembers, we certainly hear from the community a lot is, you know, why, it sort of, let me find the right words here. We know that we have twice as many people in jail from the cases that Auburn's bringing forward compared to neighboring communities. So I feel like, you know, that's something that people probably don't know out in the community. But I think there's still a sentiment that there are a lot of things going, um, unaddressed. And I think the question in that is, from a process or procedure perspective, not possibly resolved whether it's municipal or district. And I think that comes to, are the cases themselves being brought forward, uh, to be addressed by judges? Uh, and if that's not happening, where's that drop off? Can you speak to that?
Well, the number, we're essentially reactive, the courts. We take whatever cases that the city decides to prosecute and file. So we're filing, we're handling what other cases that the city attorney and the prosecutor decide that they're going to file. So if the city attorney is deciding not to file cases, that's, uh, a choice that they're making. Uh, I'll make a comparison in King County, unincorporated, King County Prosecutor's Office are choosing not to file many, many cases. And that's, uh, different than a lot of the cities, how, how they handle things. And that's not judiciary will handle what they get, but it's really a matter of policy decision on the part of the city as to what they want to file.
Thank you. The, uh, direction that I provided to both police and legal several years ago is if it's an arrestable offense, we will arrest. If it's a prosecutorial offense, we will prosecute. We will not be part of the problem. We will do our part to ensure the public safety in our community. And then we leave it to the judges.
And just to speak to that, um, when you look at, uh, filings by jurisdiction comparison from 2012 to 2023, so when, in 2013, when we had a full year of King County District Court, the filings was, were 10,626 total, uh, the highest in the period between 2013 and 2023. So through 2022, highest filings were in 2014 with 13,687. So that was a 28% increase from 13 to 14. And then slowly the filings hovered around, uh, 12,000, 12,500 in years 25, or 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018. In 2019, uh, filings dropped 12% to 11,176. And then in COVID, so 2020, 7,500, so a 32% drop. 6,118% drop. 6,200, so 1.9% increase in 2022. And then they have jumped up significantly to 18,872 filings, so a 203% increase.
And is that for Auburn's files?
Yes.
So I've been told that, uh, if the city were to form its own municipal government, the mayor can appoint, council confirm, the municipal court judge every four years.
No, if the population is large enough and it would be a full-time judge, which requires election. And a judicial needs study would indicate that you would need full, two full-time judges. So it'd be similar to Federal Way where you'd need two full-time elected judges. So depending on the timing, and I think that this timing would mean, uh, of, of your decision would mean that there would be an election, an initial election.
I think we might be able to do an initial appointment.
Yeah, I can't be sure.
Preliminary legal information that we could do the first appointment and then.
Yeah, and that could be, that could be possible because I haven't looked at it, but just looking at the timing, you could do the initial appointment and then thereafter it would always be an election. And I think Judge Harn wanted to add something.
I just wanted to note, your neighbors, Pacific and Algonia, joined the district court a couple of years ago. And I think they are very happy with our services with the district court. And I happen to be their municipal court judge, so I'm a little biased. Um, but I do believe that honestly. And I do, what I really want to say to you is I, I think we can do a really good job. And Judge Robertson is motivated to do that. So I would really encourage you to give us a chance to do that good job for you. Um, we can do it. We've done it before and we, for a long time, Auburn was very happy with the district court. And, and I think we want to go there again. And I, I don't think any of us are denying that there, there was that misalignment. We needed a wake-up call and I think we've got it. So I, I hope that you will give us a chance to show you that we can be the court, your court of choice in an equitable and fair and efficient way. So that's what I ask of you.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Candace, did you have, did you ever send that to us in a report, which you just read off?
Um, so I, uh, I don't believe it was included in the report, what, um, legal opinion that we got about the appointment. Um, and those are the matters where, uh, when we talk about entering into another contract with National Center for State Courts, that we can get definitive information for this council about what that means to the point where a decision needs to be made in, by February 1st, 2025. We'd like to have all of, um, those pieces of the puzzle of what the next steps would be and all the decision points and all the legalities fine-tuned and to adhere to that commitment of transparency, that we've done the legal analysis. We know exactly all of the factors of the decision-making that is before this council and this very important subject.
So you said we're going to have another, another report in, in another month or so, you said?
Uh, the, the council will, um, hear a report out from King County District Court and the presiding judge in April. Um, really what I was looking for, uh, was to pursue an additional contract with National Center for State Courts to outline all of these pieces of standing up a municipal court and basically listing out all of the things that, so we have a comparison of what we get with King County District Court versus a municipal court, what the timeline would be, what the financial investment would be, um, what the election timeline would be, if there was an election, or the appointment timeline would be, all the legalities around the appointment and reelection, to be able to present that to all of you.
Yeah, because I, I, I'm happy to have you folks here and you presenting it all this because I know we had it last several months ago and it seemed like it was only one-sided. And it, I just feel like you've kinda just brought us all back to the center. And, uh, we've learned more about what's going on and where we should really focus on and what we should think about. So, thank you.
Any more questions?
Not this time, maybe in April.
I don't think so, not today.
Thank you very much for coming forward and answering our questions.
Of course, thank you. Thank you. And thank you very much. I appreciate it. And one, I just wanted to suggest that one, um, point of contact is the administrative office of, office of the courts because they may be able to really help you with some things that are outside the expertise of the National Center for State Courts is the Washington Administrative Office of the Courts. And I'm happy to help you do that. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, uh, Chair Rigs, good job. And, uh, being no other business before us, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Yes.